May I ask the clerk to call the roll?
Good evening. I'd like to call this joint meeting to order. It is Thursday, December 1st. This meeting is being recorded by WCTV and audio recorded by Jamie Wickston. Three members of the school committee are present, so we have a quorum on the school committee. This is a joint meeting with the selectmen and the finance committee. It looks like the selectmen do not have a quorum, but I will turn it over to Chair Person Pigeon and the finance committee. If you'd like to, if you need to.
What's enough if we have a quorum?
Quorum, correct.
Mr. Chairman, the finance committee is, has a quorum and we have come called to order.
Thank you and welcome. Could we all please stand for their pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberty, whose essence is for all.
Could I have a motion to open up public hearing?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Three, zero, zero, approved. So we are now in public hearing for the FY '24 budget and I will turn it over to Dr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, everyone. My name is Matt DeAndrea. I'm Superintendent of Schools. Before we start getting into the numbers, I would like to say thank you to a number of folks that have done a tremendous amount of work on this budget. Mostly the person to my left, Kristen Flynn, our finance director, has put countless hours into putting this budget together. Also, Dr. Schwam up on the stage. Thank you to her, thank you to our principals, their staff and our central administration, central office administration, and also the school committee subcommittee for their help on this also. The budget, there is a budget document that is available that has this PowerPoint in it and it also includes an FY '24 draft budget, line item budget in it. The goals for this budget are first that we want to make sure that we fund a quality education for our students, that we maintain our facilities, and that we present full transparency to the Wareham community. The assumptions that we've made include natural gas and electricity. We increased 10% at the elementary, I'm sorry, at the middle and the high school and 20% at the elementary school. For gas and diesel, we increased 10%. For out-of-district tuitions, for our students who need to attend out-of-district schools, for private schools, it's a 14% increase. That is decided by the state on that increase and that does impact this budget significantly. There is some pushback on the state level for that, so hopefully there will be some possible relief down the, down the, down the road. And for collaboratives, we have an increase of 3%, which is a typical increase for a year for a collaborative. This is a level service budget from FY '23, simply taking the services and personnel that we currently have in place and moving it over to FY '24 and applying any contractual obligations that will impact the increase to the budget. We are also offsetting this budget, which we'll talk about at the, at the end of the presentation. Okay. So I'd like to start, go ahead, I'd like to start with some information on our students, the population of our schools, 22 to 23, this current school year, we've got about 1,997 students and we're projecting a little bit over 2,000 for next year. Our student population is very diverse. We have 60 students whose first language is not English. That's about 2.9% of the district and 23% of the state is, is their first language is not English. We have 23 English language learners. The difference in that is there can be students whose first language is not English but are proficient in English. An English language learner is a student that has, has not reached proficiency in English language. And so we have 23 of those students, about 1.1% of our district and 11% at the state. We have 1,375 low-income students, 67.3% of the district, while it's 43.8 at the state. 538 students with disabilities, that's about 25.9% of our population where it's about 18.9 at the state level. And 1,512 of our students are high-need students, that's 72%. And you can see underneath is a definition of what makes a student be categorized as high-needs and it's typically students that are low-income, English language learners, former ELLs, or students with disabilities. This budget is broken into 10 cost centers and these are the cost centers up on this slide. I'm gonna go through them and put a little bit more information on each one. So central office center, it's a little over a million dollars. That included in that section of the budget is myself, my salary, the finance directors, our data coordinator, our legal fees come out of that section, our technology, we have lots of technology that comes out and audits, when we're audited every year, comes out of that section. The district-wide section of the budget, about two and a half million dollars. Our, our student data software and some additional software, our, for our website, our human resources comes out of this, this part of the budget. Also, our nurses, our tuition reimbursement for our teachers comes out of this section of the budget. The next three are the schools, broken out by each school. Within each of those centers is personnel, building maintenance, supplies, textbooks, utilities, technologies, technology, excuse me, and substitutes. Curriculum instruction section is our assistant superintendent, instructional software, professional development. Our student services section is our director of student support services, special education, our out-of-district coordinator, the secretary for that department, and some related services for our students. Our out-of-district tuition, which I spoke about earlier, our private and collaborative is about $3.5 million. Transportation, $2.7 million, that's our transportation director, the secretary, all of our drivers, the monitors for our bus, and our out-of-district transportation. And finally, our ELL section, $208,000. We, we have two teachers, we do have a small ELL population, two teachers, and of course supplies and money for translations fall into the, that cost center. All said and done, that's $37.8 million. There is some offsets that we're gonna talk about later that I mentioned earlier. Kristen Flynn is going to, in the next few slides, she's broken this budget down a little bit more, comparing it to the current year to show where there have been significant increases and decreases. She's also broken it down so we can see what some of the cost drivers are and then finally she'll share the offset and the final numbers.
Thank you. So you have all the information in your packet, as Dr. DeAndrea said. So what I'm gonna talk about this next slide, it breaks down the school department budget by salaries, our major categories, salaries, tuition, transportation, utilities, contract services, other, operations and maintenance, supplies, and insurance. So that's how that $37.8 million, almost $37.9 million, is broken down. And what I did was I took a look at the difference between what was budgeted, the approved budget for this fiscal year, FY '23, versus what we're projecting for next year. So I'm just gonna take a few minutes to talk about each category. So salaries, that's pretty self-explanatory, that's the salaries of all of our personnel, including teachers, paras, administrators, staff, custodians, bus drivers, food ser, food service workers are actually not in here, they're a part of their own separate entity. So all of substitutes, anyone that comes to work here at Wareham Public Schools. The only, actually the only section of the staff that is not included in salaries for this purpose here is, is the transportation salaries. Those are broken out with the transportation expenses, okay? So when you see the salaries, it does not include any of the transportation salaries. I thought it was more helpful to show transportation as one, as one unit in this regard. So salaries are up about $2 million and what makes that? Well, it's anyone who is getting a COLA increase, a STEP increase, whatever. What we did was we looked at who do we have here today working in Wareham Public Schools and projected what their salary will be for next year. So it's not simply a flat percent on top of whatever last year's was. We started with who do we have here in our, in our buildings today? So that's salaries. Tuitions, this is, as Dr. DeAndrea said, our out-of-district tuition, the collaborative tuitions and private school tuitions, and these are, these have an increase of approximately $586,000. And as we mentioned earlier, the private tuitions are increasing by 14% right now. That's set by the state, by the Occupational Services Division. So any private school, if that's a eligible private school, certified private school in the state would get that 14% increase. Now that is under consideration right now, but those are the numbers that we have to work with, so that's what you see here in this budget. For collaborative tuitions, those are generally about a 3% increase every year. And in budgeting for those, for that aspect of the budget, what we did was we took a look at, again, just like salaries, who are the students that we have now going to these placements? Assume that they're going to be here next year. If there are students who are aging out, that won't be in those placements next year, we took them off before we applied those percentages. So it's basically, again, starting from who do we have now and looking at what would it cost for them for next year? So it's not, again, it's not just simply a percentage on top of last year. So it's, it's we're looking at what we have now and what it's gonna be for next year. Transportation, as I mentioned, transportation includes salaries in this regard. So we're going to have our salaries of our transportation director, our clerical salary, bus drivers, substitute bus drivers, and also any expenses associated with the transportation department, fuel, parts, driver exams, those types of expenses, and also our in and out of district contracted services. So any routes that we do not service here with our Wareham Public Schools vehicles or with our Wareham Public Schools drivers, we have to outsource them to transportation contract vendors if we don't have the capacity to do it in-house. We do have several routes that are going outside of Wareham, some of them are very costly, some of them are less costly. So in addition to having line items for school bus drivers, we also need to have line items for those contracted service providers. And we're also, in this here, transportation increases, we're looking at hopefully hiring more drivers. We've, we have some help wanted ads out right now, so if we can hire more drivers, that means that we can pull some of those more costly routes that are outsourced back into providing it ourselves. So those lines, the transportation salaries and the contract services, it's a balance, the transportation contract services, it's a balance between providing it ourselves and providing it out. So perhaps as we go through the budget process further, we can, we may be able to adjust based on whether or not we've been able to hire more drivers and can provide that service here in-house at probably a cheaper, a cheaper rate. So that is our transportation. So utilities, you know, with utilities, you see a decrease and you might say, why are we decreasing utilities when we hear that, you know, everything is going up? So what we did with utilities is I took a look, again, at what the, what the cost is for the utility, what our costs were last year, what our actuals were, compared it to what was budgeted. And in some areas, there was some surplus, so we kind of did, I did a reset. So I took that cost from last year and then added those projections that Dr. DeAndrea said, between 10 and 20%. 20% more at the new school, 10% at our other buildings, based on what we're seeing now. Now, keep in mind, at the time that this budget was started, it was around October and we really only had July, August, and September's history worth of invoices and we hadn't been hearing some of the higher utility costs as, as we are now. So again, much like transportation, we, that might be something that we'll have to take a look at in the coming months to see if that may need to be adjusted. So that's the rationale there. So it was a decrease because there were some, some utility accounts, and again, this is heat, electricity, gas, water, anything like that. Some of those did have more money than what we needed last year, so in some cases, we reset that. So that's why you see a decrease. Okay, contracted services, this is almost a million dollars, it is a small decrease. But in contracted services, it's kind of a, it's a variety of expenditures, but really it's our legal expenses, audit expenses, copier, copier expenses, medical and therapeutic services, so if we have to go out and get the services of a contracted PT or OT, school physician, school nursing services, that's contained here, any of our contracted services for technology, for some of our technology services, athletic trainers for athletics. So that's what you're going to see here in, in contract services. And those, those were adjusted based on, you know, current, current, looking at past, last year's past expenses and looking at what we're paying this year. So there was a little bit of a reset there as well. And these here, these contracted service, services, the only contract services that's not included in here is our facilities contracted services and I'm gonna talk about those when we talk about operations and maintenance. In the other expenses category, that's kind of, you know, again, that's $554,000, so you say, well, that's a lot just to say other. So other is, and some of these are, when you see these, they're based on how the Department of Education classifies expenses, so we have to report every year. We have to report based on the function, which I'm going to talk about in a little bit, and based on what they call the object, and the object is the type of expense. So many of them are classified and the Department of Ed tells us what each thing should be. So these are, that's how everything, those line items that you see on your line item budget, the middle two numbers is what is our Department of Ed number. So that tells you what the account number is and how to report it to the Department of Ed. So that's why some of these things are organized in this fashion because that's how we have to code it in our information system to be reported to the Department of Ed. So other, what can other be? Other is some technology expenses for, such as Chromebooks, switches, any technology repairs, professional development expenses, course reimbursees, course reimbursements. Some transportation, it's not home-to-school transportation, so it's not like the big yellow bus bringing kids, picking kids up, bringing them home. It's more student activity transportation. That is classified here per the Department of Ed, so you're going to have maybe field trips or athletic transportation. You're gonna see that classified as other. Also, some athletic officials, athletic police details for, say, athletics or any events we may need to have a police detail for, and any travel, you know, any travel for, to go to a course or to, to go to, to visit another school, things like that. So that's what you're going to see in other. So when you look, you know, when you, if you go back and look at this presentation with your line item budget, when you look at it, what you're going to see is in the line items, it's the fifth set of numbers, it's four digits, that's what's going to tell you what the function is, which we'll talk about, and then the next set of digits is the type of expenditure. So that's how you can kind of, if you wanna look at the line item budget and relate it to this presentation where it's all, you know, it's all classified together, you'll be able to follow it a little bit better. Okay, the next one is operations and maintenance. So operations and maintenance is what you would expect, our fields and grounds expenditures, so any expenditures for snow removal, fuel, any repairs, the irrigation system. And again, these here are all expenses, they're not salaries related, so it's not the fields and grounds salaries, it's the fields and grounds expenses. Any custodial supplies, facilities supplies, building supplies, building supplies meaning like supplies to fix the building, not building supplies as in classroom supplies. Equipment supplies, so anything to do with the server or the internet and the security of, of the building. So that's all in operations and maintenance. Supplies, general supplies, in this section of the budget, there's office supplies, classroom or instructional supplies, human resources supplies, nurses supplies, any textbooks and materials, athletic supplies, and you can see some of the increases. That is looking at what we're seeing for costs now for some of our classroom supplies. It could be increased shipping or increased supply chain, so nothing that's not surprising. And finally, insurance. So in the insurance section of our budget, we have student accident insurance or student athletic insurance for our sports. We also have section for employee health insurance and that's what makes up the majority of it. The student insurance is about $18,000 and the remainder is some employee health insurance. So that's what makes up all of the categories of our budget this year. Okay, so you heard me talk about the Department of Ed function code. So this is how it breaks it down. So when you look at your line item budget, you're gonna see four numbers, which is, I think, the fifth position in. That's what's gonna relate to here. So when you see instruction, obviously in a school department budget, we should see that instruction is your biggest part of, of the, of the budget. And here in Wareham, it's 66%. So if you look at your line item budget, anything that's a 2,000 account, that's classified as instruction. So you're going to see, obviously, classroom supplies, teacher salaries, paraprofessional salaries, anything related to the instruction of the students. So that's what's in, that's what takes up 66% of our budget. The next largest portion is pupil services. So that is, when you look at your budget, that's going to start with a three, it's going to be your 3,000 expenditure. So that's how you can look at that, you can see these here. So in pupil services, we're going to have transportation, athletics, health and safety, so nursing, physicians, security, the school resource officer, any costs related to the attendance officers, and also any student activities. So student activities might be clubs, it would be, you know, anything, anything related to non-athletic but other student activities, okay? So that's next, pupil services. The next largest portion is operations and maintenance and we talked a little bit about that. And operations and maintenance in your budget is going to start with a four, so it's any of the 4,000 accounts. That's how you can see what those are, that make that up. And again, that would be custodial, facilities, fields and grounds, things, costs of that nature. The next one is tuition, which is 9% again, and that is our out-of-district tuitions and those are classified as a 9,000 account. So there's just a few of those. And when you look at the account numbers, you heard Dr. DeAndrea talk about the cost centers. So the cost centers are the second number in, so that's how you can, that's how that, you can look at that. So anything that's in the same cost number, center will have the same second number in. So that's how, you know, you can make, make sense of that budget. Okay, after tuition is administration, so that is the expenses related to the school committee, to the superintendent's office and the business office. Those are a 1,000 account. So if you're looking at the first page of your line item budget, that's what you're gonna see first. That O1, 001 is school. That means any of our school general fund expenditures start with that, they all do. The next one is O1, so that there is gonna tell you that's a school committee expenditure. And then the, there's a few other numbers and then that 1,110, that's gonna tell you it's an administration account. So that's how you can, again, make sense of that. So that's a very small portion of the budget. An even smaller portion is insurance and fixed costs, so those are going to be a 5,000 account. Again, we talked about the insurance, which was, be our health insurance and our student athletic insurance, and also some copier leases and, and are in that account. Finally, fixed assets, and fixed assets are a 7,000, I believe, and it's very small and it's just expenses, it's, it's, it's less, you know, it's less than 1%, obviously. It's so small, it doesn't show up on our chart too well. But those are related to any motor vehicle expenses, so any replacement of motor vehicles. So we do have some vehicles that we have here in the school department and that would be any costs associated with that. So that's how the budget is broken out. And again, I present this because that's how we have to report it to the Department of Ed, that's how we classify our expenditures, and that's how your line item budget is organized. Okay. So the entire budget, it's made up out of salaries, which we talked about, and expenses, which we talked about. And here at Wareham Public Schools, salaries are 73% of the budget, which, which is very typical in a school department budget. We are a labor-driven workplace, we need our teachers and our staff to, to be our main, our main drivers of instruction in our, our work here. So expenses, salaries, we, we talked about earlier, expenses we did as well, but I thought it would be helpful to break down the expenses a little bit more on the next slide by category. So we talked a little bit about this, but again, in our expenses, our tuitions are the highest percentage of expenses, those are the out-of-district, those are the out-of-district tuitions at 34%. Transportation expenses, and again, those trans, that transportation, 27%, that does include salaries for drivers and for our transportation staff, is 27% of, of the budget, of the expense budget. Utilities are 10%, contracted services, 8%, operations and maintenance, 6%, other is 6%, insurance is 5%, and supplies is 6%. I mean, I'm sorry, 4%. So that's just how our expense categories are broken down. Now, on this one, one thing I do want to mention about this slide here is, it's important to note that between tuition, which is, again, the tuition to our out-of-district placements, which is either set by the state or set by the collaborative school, transportation, which we are required to provide for students to get them to and from school, and utilities, which we also are, need to, need to maintain, those three categories make up 76% of that expense budget. So there's not a lot of, of leeway here for any, you know, for any discretionary items. The remainder of the budget, contract services, some of those are prob, are also fixed, operations and maintenance, other, insurance, also fixed, and supplies. So there's not, there's really not a lot of areas to, to trim off or to, you know, to, to start to look at that are more discretionary. Okay, so just a bigger view of the budget now that we broke it down. So our requested budget before any offsets is $37,893,967. Now, Dr. DeAndrea did talk about some offsets that we are planning to use to offset this budget. In the FY '23, our current year's budget, we used some of the SR3 funds and right now we're looking at having and right now, we're looking at having about one point eight million in S R funds available that can, that may change depending on how things go for the rest of the fiscal year with the budget, but that's what's planned as of October. Circuit breaker is one million is planned. Circuit breaker is a reimbursement from the state for your more costly special education expenses. We can claim certain expenses, which the state will reimburse at a certain amount. Our out-of-district coordinator, our special ed director, student services director, and our transportation director and her staff worked very hard to, on this claim, to really maximize the amount of reimbursement that we're going to be getting this year. So that will be helpful in next year's budget as well, because what we're claiming this year, the students that we will claim, will be for next year. So it is helpful. The two forty grant is a special education federal entitlement grant, and part of that grant is written to pay for these costly out-of-district placements. So when you saw, when you see the line items, so the out-of-district placements, that's the total anticipated cost, and then the offset to that is your circuit breaker and this four hundred and fifty thousand from the two forty grant. We also received a grant this year, it was a new grant called the I V A Q grant, and it's for ventilation and air quality. And so we received some funds from the state for that. We applied for it and received it, and that's going to be helpful in maintaining some of our H V A C systems, replacing a rooftop unit, and in this case, for the budget, offsetting a salary for an applicable salary. And finally, we are allowed to use school nutrition funds. The school nutrition fund is a separate budget. It's a standalone operation. It exists from federal and state reimbursement funds and any meal charges, so, but the school nutrition guidelines recognize that some of the operations staff operating budget also assists with running that program. So for example, you may have a custodian that is in the cafeteria from eleven in the morning till one in the afternoon, helping to set up and clean up with the lunch. So some of their salaries or applicable costs can be used to come in from the school nutrition and offset in that manner. So we put that in there. So our requested budget after the offsets is thirty-four million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight. So how does this compare to our current year's budget? The budget here before offsets was thirty-four million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. In order to get to the approved FY twenty-three budget that we're working with now, one point eight million in S R was used to offset, and six hundred and thirty-eight thousand in circuit breaker was used to offset. So we're using roughly the same amount of S R, we hope to, and more circuit breaker to offset the FY twenty-four budget. So here you can see, just a quick summary, our requested budget after offsets, again, thirty-four million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight. Approved budget for FY twenty-three was thirty-two million, fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety. So the dollar increase from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four after the offsets is two million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight. And the percentage increase from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four after the offsets is seven and a half percent. And again, as Dr. DeAndrea said, this is a level service budget, so the goal was to take what we have this year and project it for next year. So I believe that's all I have right now.
If I may, just to wrap up, so we, you know, we do recognize seven point five, seven percent's a big number. We do recognize that. The current budget that we are in right now, our FY twenty-three budget, has the resources that we need to provide our students with the education they need. This budget that we're proposing doesn't add any staff, doesn't add supplies or materials. The last two years, our students have experienced tremendous, tremendous learning loss due to the pandemic. And we feel strongly, we need to keep these supports in place to catch our students up and give them the education they need. So I thank you again for being here this evening, and we're happy to answer questions, and we're happy to provide more information if requested.
Good evening. Bernie Pidgen from the chairman of the Finance Committee. I guess I'll go first. And meaning no disrespect to the presenters, I'll address the chairman of the school committee because you're the people who are going to be voting in two weeks on this. Do you happen to know what our tax rate is per thousand? It's ten dollars and eighty-seven cents. And we're the lowest of all the surrounding communities. Falmouth, which is the next one, if we had their tax rate and base, we'd be picking up seven, six-plus million dollars for the coming year. But we don't have that. Our potential revenues for FY twenty-four, around seventy-five, seventy-six million, very pessimistic, and you're requesting thirty-four million, thirty-four point five. In your cost centers, the three greatest ones are, of course, the three buildings, the elementary school, you got about nine hundred and sixty students, you're paying about eleven thousand, four hundred per student to run that operation. That's, for every staff member, you have six students. In the middle school, you have four hundred and thirty, you're spending about fifteen thousand, five hundred per student, and for every staff member, you have five students. High school, seven hundred students, about thirteen thousand per student. You got three point nine students for every staff member. That's quite a ratio in all of those cost centers. The municipal side, however, has expenses involved in that cost of running those cost centers, as well as the overall operation you have. It's quite significant, too. You're running thirty-four point four, three, eight, four eighty-eight million is what you're asking for. Those are your operational costs. That's not your indirect costs. Your indirect costs come out of the municipal side of government, where we run our police department, maintenance, et cetera. The healthcare increase is about four percent, so it's five million, five point one, five nine million. The retired teacher healthcare is one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one. The Plymouth County Retirement School is about fifty-six percent of that issue. That's three million, two hundred and sixty-nine, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. School charter sending, two million, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine. School choice, one million, four hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one. FICA, seventy-two percent, four hundred and ten thousand. Workers' comp, two hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-two. General liability, two hundred and eighty-nine, one fifty-six. And of course, we have that other school system that we unanimously, every year, approve expenditures for. The upper Cape Cod Tech, a three million, two hundred and nine thousand, six eighty-nine, total of eighteen million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So if you add that to what you're asking for, plus what the municipal side has to provide, that's up with fifty-two million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand approximately. Minus, let's say, seventy-five million, the pessimistic figure I outlined, twenty-two million, three hundred and seventeen, to run an operation, which in FY twenty-three was twenty-one million. So that doesn't leave us much. In fact, we're short two million dollars by those pessimistic figures, and I will readily admit, those figures, except the ones I read, are very preliminary as to how our revenues are going to concern. It is just too early to make an estimate, reasonable estimate, as to what may happen, whether in Washington or in Boston. So with your presentation this evening, I have to say I'm very pessimistic on our ability to even fund your level budget. And we're in this together. And no matter how important we feel any department may be, understand on the municipal side, there's some very serious conditions that currently exist. If you go through that building, every single office has a minimum of two empty desks. The selectmen have one and a half people, used to have four. Maintenance used to have twenty, twenty-some-odd people. They only have ten or twelve. Sewer department, it currently has, I think they were running ten, they should have thirteen, fourteen. The police department, we have forty-four officers, forty-five, excuse me. Some issue with the legislature wouldn't allow us to hire officers for the summer, so a lot of activities down and on said had to be postponed or canceled altogether, so we have forty-five officers. We've had forty-five officers for over ten years, way into, I always speculate back into the seventies, I've been told, that predates me. But that is just very, very disappointing, considering what they doing. EMS is short-staffed, we have three ambulances, running two. In accounting, we have two people over there. You have five over here. If I'm implying you're overstaffed, yes, you are. From my perspective, you are. As far as teachers are concerned, please do not even consider laying one off. But I think your other staff is overburdened with personnel. That's my opinion. And I'm sure my colleagues here on the Finance Committee, they do some finer, more finer examination of the budget, they may have some comments to make. But seriously, I would plan a Plan B, because we are all very pessimistic around the potential revenues. Every cost that we have is a required or necessary cost that we have to meet. We at one time had some way or some window of opportunities, some funds were coming down, we were able to plan and sacrifice, and we made it work. I don't think we have those kind of opportunities anymore. Unfortunately, I don't think we do. It's a sad situation, but we're a little bitty Wareham. We're not that overly important as far as any appropriations from the state or federal government. The state's sitting on over a billion dollars, and they spend more time trying to figure out how to spend it than how to give it back. I'm sorry to be such a downer on your projections, but I think it's something we have to consider, and that's the purpose of this presentation, to give disagreements of what the budget, and it's preliminary, I know. And I appreciate the time you're spending here and that we can have this kind of discussion, and I'm certain we'll have more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments from the public or any committee?
Deanna Semple, Wareham resident, elementary teacher, and president of the teachers' union. I would tend to agree with the Finance Committee member who, well, obviously, I would agree that we don't need to cut any teachers. We do have some expenses that I am aware of that may be trimmed a little bit. I just wanted to read a couple examples. We have, the district is paying forty thousand dollars to an assistant town administrator to act as an HR director. Why are we paying for this position when most districts our size expect the superintendent and assistant superintendent to do this work? I also question a lot of our consultant work and out-of, like contractual work. We have a school psychologist, which is under the Unit A contract, that's being paid out of contract, so that's a consultant fee for somebody who should be a staff member. Speaking of consultants, we are paying outside consultants sixty-eight thousand dollars to provide professional development when we have an assistant superintendent and a district administrator with a combined salary of almost three hundred thousand dollars. I noticed that you needed to use a lot of the S R funding for your, the poor fiscal planning that may have been created by a previous superintendent. You won't have that next year, but these expenses are still going to be here. I don't know how you're going to fill that gap at that time. Can you explain the need for seven technology positions, four additional facilities positions in addition to the custodial staff, seven administrators in central office, eight administrators at the elementary school, four at the middle school, seven at the high school? These are non-student-facing teaching positions that are getting six-figure salaries at times. So I think, I don't know what Plan B is, but I might agree that we have to go there, too.
Mr. Slaven? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. DeAndrea first?
Yeah, I'd like to just address a couple of those. I don't think we are overstaffed. Mr. Pidgen just talked about how understaffed the town is, and that may be the case. And we're not asking for any more staff, because I don't feel we're understaffed either. We have two thousand kids that show up at our building every day that have tremendous needs, and we are expected to educate them. We're expected to deal with their mental health issues. And we have staff to do that. It's hard work, there's lots of people, and it takes people to do it. We have regulations by the Department of Education that need to be dealt with that continue to increase every year. We have more and more grants that we apply for and receive to try to offset some of these costs, and those grants need to be managed. We are not overstaffed. We have the staff we need to do the job we have to do.
Mr. Slaven?
Good evening. Alan Slaven, Selectman of the Town of Wareham. We did not post our meeting, so we cannot sit here and really make any comments at all, just to let you know what we will be doing is, in the near future, we'll hold a Selectance Meeting and ask the school committee and superintendent and business manager to come before us, FinCom if they like to. We do have a bunch of questions, but at this time, it's inappropriate for us to ask.
And we'll certainly, we want to be transparent and reach out, and we'll do so. Ideally, tonight would have been the perfect night for that. I get it, I get it.
Yes?
Jody Smith, Finance Committee. I've dug a little bit deeper into the municipal side of the budget the last couple of years, and I can sit here and justify, you know, Mr. Chairman Pidgen talking about the police department. I mean, I can tell you exactly, they have thirty-two patrol officers, seven sergeants, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I get this breakdown, and I can defend this budget. The business manager has been excellent, I've sent her some information I'm looking for. I want to be in that position where I can defend the school budget. I'm not, I don't, I'm not sitting here saying you're overstaffed, understaffed, or anything. But I want more information, and I find it a little troubling. The information we got at the past workshop, I looked quickly behind the power, in the back of the PowerPoint with the numbers, they don't even match up from what we were given at the workshop. I looked quickly, I could, might have looked at the wrong numbers, but I just looked very quickly at the numbers I have and the numbers I had from last year, and I find a lot of things very troubling. Using your workshop from last year, you're saying no new positions. One of the schools that went from thirty-eight teachers, I believe, to the elementary school, regular day, last year's workshop said forty-eight, this year says fifty-four. So I'm not really sure, but I gotta compliment the business manager, she's done an excellent job putting the numbers together. But I am looking for more before I can sit here and say, I support this budget and I would recommend passing this budget, because the town side has some real needs. Thank you.
Any other comments from anyone in the audience tonight?
Leandra Booth, a paraprofessional. My question is, when we saw the slide talk about the breakdown for the insurance as for the students, there was almost a 400,000 projected increase. We're hoping that we can get an explanation of why such a huge increase to that.
That, so you're talking about the $367,500? That is employee health insurance that the school district pays the town to help cover some of the costs of health insurance of our employees. That was, and so to answer your question about why it's increased, because there was an agreement made by the previous superintendent with the town that the school district would pay that money.
Can Deanna ask another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Was the town paying that before? I don't understand what. So are you saying that the town used to play, pay the school employees' health insurance, and now it's going to fall on the district?
Yeah, that would be employees that were hired, and I believe they were hired through the Esser grant, which the town was not consulted on before they were picked up, nor did we budget in our budget to be able to cover. So when that came on, and I'm sorry I'm giving you my bad.
No, that's fine.
When that came about, and I looked, especially last year, I realized, I don't have the money to cover this. Nobody's checked with me on hiring them, not, and I can't really stop it, but people forget that we are covering the health insurance. So, and my, not my expectation, my understanding is, much like what happened in '09 after we started losing the grants there, is that these two will be, these positions will go away, and so will that health insurance cost. Usually, when we have grants of that size and you're picking up employees, you would cover, you would cover some of their, their costs such as that.
Choice?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say first, thank you to everyone who's here today, and thank you to Dr. Deandrea and Kristin Flynn for all the work that they've put in to make this happen. Mr. Pigeon, thank you for ending your talk with, we're all in this together, because we really are. So I appreciate that. It's a collaborative effort. And to those of you who were able to join us for the all-day budget hearing a couple of, was that just a couple of weeks, a month ago? I don't know when it was. But I feel like you got a much better understanding by seeing all the principals and directors and everyone who was able to come in. I mean, is that true? I know several members of the Finance Committee were there. You know, Dr. Deandrea talks about the expectations on our teachers, on everyone who's, who works in our school system, what, you know, the needs of the students at this point, and, you know, it's really, I consider it our job, the School Committee's job, just to make sure that the schools, that they have the resources that they need to continue to serve the students, and that's what this budget represents. And I will agree with Dr. Deandrea that we, we recognize that this is a large number. But this is, this is what we're here for, right? To make sure that they have what they need for those 2,000 students who come to school every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing I was thinking, because unfortunately, I was unable to attend the workshop. My expectation would be that the numbers were different at the workshop from here because those would have been requests that might have been whittled down. Is that, would that be sort of the delta they were talking about?
No, they did it differently this year, so that's how it usually is, or it has been in the past.
Yeah.
But this year, as they said, they just took the budget and projected the cost for exactly what we're doing now to be able to do that next year. There was no, well, if I could, I'd like this. There was none of that.
All right. I was trying to figure out what the.
No, you're right, because, yeah.
So I missed it, excuse me.
No, that's okay. I, we know you're busy. But this was, like they said, just level service, no additions.
And this is my only, my third year on the committee, but I will say, by far, we want to be as transparent as possible. So if there's information that you don't think you have yet, I know that Kristin and Dr. Deandrea have encouraged you to reach out to them, and they will make, we're not going to hide anything. And I think that's a different, maybe a different philosophy or a different approach, but we're trying to be upfront with everybody about this. And we realize this is the beginning of a dialogue. We knew that coming in tonight. When you're hearing everyone say, we know that's a high percentage number. We realize that as well. First and foremost obligation is to the students of Wareham, but we realize we have to answer to the taxpayers of Wareham as well, and we want to do both. And that's, we've got to find that, that common ground to be able to do that. Any other, yes?
Just, just to follow up, I thought the workshop was excellent. I stated that, that day, I thought the principals and all involved did a great job with the presentation. And I, and I understand this is early in the process, and things are, numbers are going to change. And I'm sure at some point, we're going to get to the number we need to be. How we get there, I don't know. And I get somebody tapping my shoulder behind me for the.
Good evening. Jerry Stefanski. One question, two parts. First, Esser III, after you used the 1-860, any, any Esser funds left?
That's going to pretty much exhaust it.
Okay. Circuit Breaker, after you used the million, any funds left in that pot?
There possibly may be. So right now, that Circuit Breaker that we're estimating, whereas how that works is what you, what we're receiving in Circuit Breaker for this year is based on last fiscal year's costs. So it's really an estimate of this fiscal year's costs, and we're only a couple months in, based on an assumption of what the state will reimburse us at for what we're going to apply to next year's budget. I know that's kind of a convoluted answer, but I think, based on the costs that we're seeing now, as your cost goes up, your reimbursement goes up, and we are facing, unfortunately, more costs that are applicable to Circuit Breaker. So we will have more costs, we will have, we will likely have more revenue. So to answer your question, I, at this point, I think that there may be more than that in Circuit Breaker. But what you can do with Circuit Breaker, which is what is a best practice by the state, is to carry it forward one year so that what we would be able to do eventually is, say with confidence, I already have socked away, in the bank, so to speak, Circuit Breaker that I'm, that I carried over, so that you're not using what you're getting. So we're kind of, we're working off of what we're getting this year to pay this year. So you eventually want to get to the place, so if you do have more, so say we do have more than that million we're applying, that'll carry forward to the next fiscal year, so we'll be in a better position to project what our offsets would be and have a little bit more of a safety net should we have unexpected out-of-district placements, which we certainly have had in the past several months. So that's kind of a safety net for us.
So the answer is, there's probably some real money there?
I hope so.
Okay.
As, as of December, I would hope so. But, you know, check back with me in a couple months, and we'll be able to let you know more.
What's your best guess to that reimbursement rate for, on Circuit Breaker funds?
Don't answer that question.
Sorry, Jody. My turn. Norma Skoggin, Finance Committee. Thank you for this presentation. It's, it's a lot of information to take in, and I know that you all, everyone is doing their best here. And do you notice that the rate of increase we're talking about is almost precisely the current rate of inflation? I don't know if that's coincidence, or if that was sort of a, an aim, but in any event, I think the point is, if we're going to beat inflation here, the only way to do it is by somehow cutting costs. And I, I take what Bernie said very seriously. We've got so many demands on the people in this town, and so many needs that are not completely being met. And I saw that recently, or last night, that there may be a, an imposition of a, an improvement of all our septic systems for those of us who don't, aren't on the town sewer, to the tune of $30,000, $35,000 or more. So I think we just have to keep in mind who our population is and what we can do. And I say that as the daughter of a teacher, of lifelong educators, who believes education is very, very important. But we have to be real about what we have.
Any other comments? Mr. Swett?
It seems I have spent my life doing budgets, both in private enterprise, mostly in healthcare, but also for the past couple of decades in, in for-profit businesses and municipal businesses. So none of this is new to me. I want to start out by saying, and I know others have mentioned this, but I want to reaffirm that the level of transparency, and I am with our chair on the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee, the level of transparency we are getting in this process has never been exceeded in the 13 years or so that I've been associated with the School Committee. So be comforted by the fact that no one is hiding anything. I, by the way, Jody, I am convinced, with due respect, that when you and Kristin get together, it will be resolved to your satisfaction that she was right, because I've been wrong and she's been right in the past. So, you know, you'll get what you need, and, and the numbers will be accurate. I have no doubt in that. I think she's doing a wonderful job. Unfortunately, just to be clear, the problem is actually much bigger than this, this presentation highlights. There's almost $2 million of offsets that Kristin presented that will not exist a year from now. So if we think the problem is big today, it will be almost twice as big a year from now. And that's irrespective of the fact that it would be lovely if we were doing this in March and had better information than we do in the first part of December. I also want to emphasize what Dr. Deandrea said, which is, this is, and I come from healthcare, this is a very highly regulated business. And the level of fixed costs, and I'm defining fixed costs as either uncontrollable or contractually obligated. Now, you could say, well, aren't you in control of those contracts? Well, yes and no. We have a responsibility to have the best possible people educating our children, and they are highly educated, and they deserve the salaries they're getting. And, and to do otherwise would be a massive disservice to the parents in particular and the taxpayers in general. So I am sitting here very concerned about the long-term ability of Wareham to provide great education to its children unless we solve the revenue problem. Now, my obligation is to advocate for the parents and children of Wareham, but it's also an obligation to the taxpayers of Wareham. So it's a balancing act that I've never really figured out how to do successfully, frankly, but it's more acute today than it ever was in the 13 years or so I've been associated with the School Committee. The only good news is, I think we have highly competent people working on it, and that includes some of the people that are in the audience today, and I think everybody is acting in good faith. That doesn't mean we will come up with a great solution, but I think it will be the best possible solution for both the children and the taxpayers of Wareham, and I am committed to being a part of that solution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
3-0-0. Public meeting is closed, and I would ask, do we have a motion to adjourn School Committee meeting?
So moved.
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3-0-0 for School Committee, and it looks like the Finance Committee has agreed as well. Thank you, everybody. Meeting is adjourned.